Good morning, everybody. This will be the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 18th, year 2001. It is about 10:05 a.m. We are joined by council members Miskowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself, Councilman Padilla. We need ten members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Mr. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, Mr. Zine. If you're in the building, please make your way to council chambers. This will be the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 18th, year 2001. It is about 10:05 a.m. We are joined by council members Miskowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself, Councilman Padilla. We need ten members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Mr. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, Mr. Zine. If you're in the building, please make your way to council chambers. This will be the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 18th, year 2001. We are joined by council members Miskowski, Reyes, Weiss, and myself, Councilman Padilla. We need ten members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Mr. Galanter, Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Perry, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Wax, Mr. Zine. If you're in the building, please make your way to council chambers. Today is Wednesday, July 18th, year 2001, and welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. The City Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m., or as close to 10:00 a.m. as possible. We can be seen live on City View Channel 35, and council meetings run again at 7:00 p.m. on that same channel. We can also be heard on City Phone and viewed via webcast on our website. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Ms. Miskowski seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Pacheco moves. Mr. Reyes seconds.
Mr. President, I believe you wanted to take public comment as the first item of business today.
Let us take public comment first. We have public comment cards being handed the first. Ms. Maria Bryant, please come forward. And for everybody's information, public comment is a required part of our agenda. We hear comments from the public on items not appearing on today's agenda. We have allotted ten minutes this morning to hear from members of the public. If Ms. Maria Bryant is in chambers, would you please come forward now? Sergeant, do we have additional cards while we await Ms. Bryant? Ms. Bryant going once. Ms. Bryant going twice.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Okay. Buenos dias. Good morning. I work for the city of Los Angeles. La ciudad de Los Angeles ha puesto en un pedestal el Convention Center.
She's a worker at the Convention Center for the city of L.A.
Yo estoy trabajando allí por un periodo de un año.
She's been there working for a year.
Y yo me he dado cuenta como se trata a mis compañeros.
And she has noticed how her workers are treated.
Y se discriminan.
They discriminate against them.
Y estoy aquí mirando que los trabajadores no tenemos derechos.
And she's here today to state that the workers do not have any rights.
Por el hecho de que hay personas trabajando por 22 años.
There are workers that have been working for 22 years.
Y todavía siguen como empezaron.
And they're still at the same level as when they started.
No tienen ningún beneficio.
There's no benefits.
No trabajo permanente.
There's no permanency in their jobs.
Y son abusados verbalmente.
And they are abused verbally on the job.
No puedo comprender por qué en un centro como este se le trata a la gente de esta manera.
She doesn't understand why in this city that the workers are treated in this manner.
Que están siendo discriminados y abusados.
That they are discriminated against and abused.
Que ellos tienen a sus familias, sus hijos.
They have families, children.
Y tienen el derecho a tener un trabajo seguro y estable.
And they have a right to have a secure and stable job.
Aquí nada más trabajamos 950 horas.
We work for 50 hours.
No, 950.
Oh, 900 hours. I'm sorry.
No nos dejan pasar más de mil por no darnos beneficios.
We can't work past the thousand hours. Otherwise, this way, we're not entitled to any benefits.
Cuando saben que una persona va a llegar a las 950 horas, lo cortan detrás su trabajo.
When a worker is getting close to the 950 hours, then they cut their hours at work.
No se le dan promociones.
No promotions are available.
Y yo pienso que nosotros los trabajadores tenemos the right to have a better job, to be treated better than the way they treat us in there. And that's why, you know, I come for, to tell you what is going on in the Convention Center. A lot of things, you know, we want to work, we need to work. We don't want, we need to work, we need more hours, we need benefits, and we need to be treated better than the way they do it. And I come in representation of all my coworkers, because they've been working in there for many years, and nobody, you know, come for. So I just come here to tell you what is going on in there. And, you know, I beg you to listen to us and give us an opportunity to come all the Convention Center and talk about our problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you do have 12 of the 15 members. And you do have 12 of the 15 members present, and we are listening. Want to call, there's several more cards. We have several minutes still left on the public comment period. John Barton from AFSMI, and to be followed by Reverend Joseph Oliver.
Council President and council members, we come to you today exactly 408 days after L.A.'s recreation assistance voted by a 95 percent margin in favor of union representation. Today, you'll see many of the recreation assistants. Maybe the recreation assistants and their supporters here could quickly stand so you can see who's here. Thank you. The resolution before you seeks to commit the city to ending the process of delay and set it on a course which will improve the lives of thousands of city workers and improve the recreational park services and programs provided Angelenos. Back in June of 2000, rec assistants voted for AFSMI to achieve some fairly simple goals, namely, to end the artificial 1,000-hour cap on their job, to be paid for each hour they worked, and to gain benefits and treatment no different than any other city employee. The rec assistants are classified as what they call intermittent, meaning they are not allowed to work more than 1,040 hours per year, but many of them do. And many of these rec assistants have been working for the city over five years, some longer than 30 years. I bet you'd be surprised to learn that nearly 200 rec assistants worked more than 1,040 hours last year, yet were not benefited. And we believe that countless more worked in excess of 1,040 hours, considering both work done by rec assistants off the clock and payments made through what's called official payment vouchers. Hundreds more, we estimate. There's nothing intermittent about these workers. Many of them are regular part-time workers who deliver childcare and preschool services, work with the elderly and run sports programs, important services which improve the lives for thousands of Angelenos. In addition, because of the hours cap, many workers volunteer their time. We have filed a lawsuit against the city to put an immediate end to this practice, which our research indicates totals 15 percent of all work necessary to run L.A.'s rec and park program. This is a new city council and new administration. Today, you can seize the opportunity to improve the lives and jobs of thousands of city workers who needs have been denied over the past year. We have a saying in the labor movement, "Justice delayed is justice denied." It's time for the council to fort rightly join with the rec assistants and expeditiously enter into serious negotiations that will properly structure the rec assistants' jobs so they get the pay and benefits they deserve and that the city of L.A. gets the fully funded rec and parks program it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If possible, before Reverend Oliver speaks, we'd like to bring up the next card, Julia Munoz first, who's one of the rec assistants.
Okay, Julia Munoz, and then Reverend Oliver.
Good morning. My name is Julia Munoz, and I am a rec assistant at Eagle Rock Recreation Center and have been for the past five years. I am responsible at Eagle Rock for the managing of the office, also the coordinating of the preschool program, which many of you probably use with your children, also registering the use for the year-round sports programs. We have a senior club that meets at our center, which I also help set up their programs as well as their classes. I am here today to urge you to stand in support of our struggle for dignity and respect on the job. A rec assistant's job is not as it was 45 years ago. More than 2,000 rec assistants, like myself, provide critical and, critical programs, excuse me, for the thousands of Los Angeles youth and seniors. At the same time, we struggle to earn a decent living for ourselves and our families. Los Angeles is more than 2,000 rec assistants deserve better. We need to end our so-called intermittent classification, a status that is used to exploit our dedication to our communities and to deny us health insurance and benefits. I am not an intermittent employee. I go to work regularly for the city. I have, this is my primary job, and it has been for the past five years. I love serving the seniors, the children, and the youth of my community. I hope to be at Eagle Rock for many, many more years. But we need secure jobs with regular hours and benefits. We need good jobs that not only will earn us a decent living, but will also, will also be part of, make us strong in our communities, and to continue to provide these services for our children as well as the seniors. We have been in negotiation with the city for nearly a year now, and here we are still without a contract. Please stand up for good jobs and fairness for all city workers by supporting our struggle to get a contract that is fair and just. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we have, John, we have a group of cards still yet to go, and our time is running almost out. We have Reverend Oliver, Reverend William Campbell, and Milton Burroughs. Either keep the comments brief, please. And we also have Jason Elias here on a different issue, I believe. Same issue?
Well, Reverend, Reverend Joseph Oliver is here to speak on behalf of Reverend Norman Copeland Senior, President of the L.A. Council of Churches.
Good morning. President of the council and council members, I'm here to lend the church's voice to a plight of the recreational assistance, whom I know must have been unintentionally overlooked by the city fathers and mothers. There's no way that I can believe their misuse and abuse and lack of human dignity was done intentionally. Somewhere and somehow, their consideration fell through the cracks, and now it's time for restoration. When I speak of 2,000 people who represent the city of Los Angeles's trusts, whom you permit to staff many of the city's preschools and daycare programs, whom you allow to deal with senior citizens' summer camps and sports and cultural programs, it would seem that the city of Los Angeles considers the recreational assistant as a special group of people. So what do they want? Just ordinary things, nothing special. The ability to get the car fixed when it breaks down, money enough to send their children to school looking like their peer groups, not having to worry about their financial situation should sickness befall them. I realize that when the recreational assistant accepted this position, they understood that certain benefits were not available. But if you have no job and no money, and you're looking for work, any port in a storm It then becomes inconceivable to me in this day and age that a group of people is still struggling to gain just a decent living, when you permit people to work full-time sometime for part-time money, when this great city will allow their employees to work with no health benefits, no sick leave, no vacation, no disability benefits, no... no retirement or job security and indicate because the job of recreational assistant is an intermittent position, no employee benefits are necessary. To me, that's disgraceful and a pretty sad commentary. Your recreational assistants are entitled to be treated with the dignity and respect they deserve for the position that they hold, if for no other reason other than the fact of their dedication and loyalty to the job.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you very much. I believe Jason had sort of waved his time to the group, so this now concludes the public com- did you want to come speak? 30 seconds or less, please. We've already gone over the time. While he comes up, Milton Burrow, did you wish to speak on item number 12 or at this point in time?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Jason Elias, SEIU Local 347. Just wanted to quickly say that we wholeheartedly support the resolution in support of the recreation assistance and a fair contract. We represent just about 2,000 folks as well. Uh, this will be a groundbreaking resolution from the council. These are folks that deserve to be respected. They put in hard work for the city. And SEIU Local 347 wholeheartedly stands in support of the recreation assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Burrow, you'll be our final speaker. Did you wish to speak on an agenda item or general public comments?
Uh, my name is Milton Burrow. I'm the owner of a vacant lot in North Hollywood, which on the 6742 Morello Avenue, which, uh, I recently got a notice on of a $12,655 assessment. In 1997-
Mr. Burrow-
Yes.
That is an item on the agenda today, item number 12.
Yes, item 12.
Let me call your card when that item is before us. This is the point in time for general public comments on items not appearing on the agenda.
You called my name just before the gentleman jumped up.
Well, I was trying to ask you if you were here for a public comment or for a specific agenda item. Your card wasn't clear, but I'll call you back in just a few minutes.
I filled out a card.
Yes, I have it right here.
Oh, you're gonna call me later?
In just a couple of minutes.
Surely.
Thank you. This concludes now the public comment period for today's meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item?
Next item, Mr. President, item number six. There's a request from Building and Safety to receive and file that item.
Hold on a second. Before we do that, the chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to everybody from AFSMI who has come here today. Um, it's good to see you here. Thank you for your presence. Colleagues, today I am introducing a resolution, we are introducing this, that is seconded by President Padilla and by President Protem Thomas, Ridley Thomas, instructing the Department of Recreation and Parks and Department of Cultural Affairs as well as the CAO's office to renew their efforts to move with deliberate speed to negotiate with AFSMI. And this is something that I hope that you all will take a look at. We will be hearing it again in council, but I wanted you all to know that this is being introduced today. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Just wanted to say that I stand in support. I want to support a colleague and essentially just acknowledge the fact that there's a lot of great work being done on behalf of our youth and truly appreciate all your efforts and, uh, hopefully we'll win this in such a way where everyone benefits. Thank you.
Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine.
I too stand in support of this. I believe that while we look at something proactive, this is something proactive where we can take our youth, where we can take the good efforts that you folks do every single day to steer them in the right direction. We put a tremendous amount of money into public safety and to me, this is a proactive approach to public safety where we can do something positive. I have always believed that education comes first, incarceration becomes second, and this is in that focus of education and a proactive, so my compliments to all of you and thank you for your appearance this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and to once again conclude public comments, we look forward to deliberation on the item being introduced today. Madam Clerk, back to business.
Item number six, a request from Building and Safety to receive and file that matter.
Uh, without objection, we will receive and file that item.
A request on item number 37i, which is one of the closed session items, to continue that for one week to July 25th.
Members, continuing item 37i, without objection, that item is continued.
On the regular agenda items noticed for public hearings, items one through four are ordinances and hearings relative to street lighting districts.
Any members wishing to speak on items one through four? We have no cards and therefore no comments from the public on items one through four. Seeing no members wishing to speak and 12 members present, Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Next items, Mr. President, also items noticed for public hearing. Items five and seven through 10 are Building and Safety confirmation of assessments.
Once again, no members from the public wishing to speak on those items. Members, anybody wishing to speak on items five or seven through 10? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 11 is a Planning Land Use and Management Committee report regarding nuisance abatement appeal.
Members, item number 11 is before us. No members of the public wishing to speak on this item. Any members wishing to speak? Item number 11. There's a motion for Mr. Holden to receive and file item number 11. Is there a second? Mr. Pacheco, seconds. Members wishing to speak? The chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, we may want to lay this on the desk. This was a planning appeal that the applicant, or the appellant, wanted to withdraw, but I think the city attorney has always advised that in that case, we have to just deny the appeal without prejudice, which is what is recommended. So I think it's better to take the action as recommended rather, yeah, that's what we're doing. So that, I move the committee report.
That's correct. That's been our advice, is that you need to deny this.
We now have two motions before us. Mr. Holden, did you wish to speak? Mr. Holden withdraws his motion and supports the moving of the committee report. Mr. Burton? Members, the committee report is now before us. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Committee report is adopted.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 12 is confirmation of 1911 Act assessment, and that's in Council District 7.
Yes, we do have one speaker card on this item. Council calls forward Milton Burrow. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. This vacant lot proved to be a very bad investment, which is no problem of this board. I bought it in 1990. It has progressively gone down in value, including the time after they had done the improvement of the curb and gutters. Uh, my contention is that my property was not increased in value at all because of any of this and it's a considerable sum and I'd like some relief from the council or whomever can help me on this matter.
So is there any department staff available to answer Mr. Burrow's questions? Chair recognizes Mr. Burton.
Sir, are you referring to the assessment on your property, the property tax?
Uh, no, this is not a part of the property tax.
What are you, what are you-
A separate assessment for the curb and the street improvement-
Oh, I see, okay.
On Morello Avenue, one side of my property only.
I think we're gonna have to have somebody from Public Works to address that.
Let's leave this on the desk while we wait. Department, or department staff here? You want to come forward and respond to the gentleman's question? You may want to begin as well with letting us know of the, was there a positive vote on the assessment?
Honorable counsel, I am Randy Price with the Bureau of Street Lighting and the Department of Public Works. This is a 1911 Act assessment project that was initiated by petition in 1997. It has gone through due process and is in compliance with Prop 218 requirements. There were four property owners that were assessed for this benefit. Three of the four have voted yes in favor of the project. Uh, Mr. Burrow is the property owner that voted against the project. It, uh, each of the property owners have been assessed according to the average benefit width of the lot and the benefit was spread, what is in compliance with the Public Works methods and practices of spreading the benefit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burrow, did you wish to add any other comments?
Well, uh, my, value of my property has continued to go down, as they say, even after the improvements, so I receive no benefit whatsoever from this $12,655 assessment. That's my contention. If I could get some relief on the amount of that or whatever, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. And we have department staff here, maybe they can step aside with you and answer your questions or provide additional information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment on item number 12. The chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski.
If it's appropriate, it says it's a motion required in as much as it is indicated that the work has been done based on a petition of majority, I would just move confirmation of the assessment.
Ms. Misakowski moves. Mr. Burton, seconds. Seeing no other members wishing to speak, Clerk, please open the roll on item number 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That item is approved. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President, items note, excuse me, for which public hearings have been held, items 13 through 26. Item number 25 has two reports on the file, however, both concur, so council may adopt both of those.
Members, items 13 through 26, public hearings have been held. Item number 20 is called special. Item number 18 is called special.
16.
Item number 21 is called special.
16.
Item number 16 is called special. Any other specials? Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Item number 20 is an item that was calender pursuant to a prior council action and it's relative to a fund transfer.
Which item is that?
Item number 27.
Item number 27. No cards on item number 27. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Clerk, please open the roll on item number 27. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item number 27 is approved. Let's send that one forthwith as well as item number 25 forthwith.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 28 through 36.
Items 28 through 36 are now before us. Uh, have no request from the public to speak on these items. Any members wishing to speak on items 28 through 36? Let's call item 28 special by Mr. Garcetti. Members, any other specials? Items 29 through 36 remain before us. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President, the closed session items, do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold the closed session items on the desk.
Item number 16 was called special, I believe by Councilmember Reyes.
Item number 16 was called special. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President and colleagues, during the ad hoc committee, we got reports on various steps and measures that have been taken to comply with the consent decree. And I just wanted to raise one issue to the council is that when we begin the data collection, we just finished a pilot program. The report has not been presented on the pilot program in terms of written report, but we did get some early indications that it was very favorable. One of the things that, um, when we collect the data for racial profiling that I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of, that has been emphasized in committee, was that in order to protect the civilian or the individual who's being stopped, I have requested that the RFP include a, some mechanism of giving the person stopped or detained a receipt. Uh, the value of the receipt from my viewpoint is that in the event that we get 20 or 30 stops in the neighborhood, that we can actually deal with some sort of auditing or basically counterchecking the official police report through an external mechanism, basically the civilians who have been stopped with their receipts. Uh, so I just wanted to reemphasize to everyone that the direction we're going in with the RFP is to provide us with the receipt for the actual person being stopped. The police department is actually looking at this from another vantage point that under new state law, the way the tickets are given for the meter readers and parking tickets, that we can possibly give traffic violation tickets in a similar manner where you don't actually need the signature of the driver under state law now. As long as the officer will testify that they actually issued that ticket in court if it's ever challenged. So the police department sees other opportunities to consolidate and utilize the receipt mechanism or the printout of that contact, which I believe will make us a much more efficient police force also. So I just wanted to give that update to the council and reassure you that we're working hard on making sure that the consent decree is being followed.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to reaffirm that Mr. Pacheco has asked that question and directed that the printout be a part of the receipt in terms of the profiling issue. And in fact, there is a, an RFP being prepared right now. I will make sure that the council members get a copy of that so that we can verify that that is a requirement of the, in the request for proposal, so that will come back with the printout capability and then be utilized. Um, in addition to that, the overall status update was information about the independent monitor having been selected, who has been in town, has started to meet with our city people, actually participated in our city working group efforts and has indicated how the independent monitor is going to be looking to receive reports to the city in meeting our deadlines. As a consequence of that, we have had some deadlines that were set for projects to be underway that are already not being met. And so we asked in this, in our ad hoc committee to have a report from the police department as to why that has not been met and how they can catch up on some of those issues that were set in a timeline to be already underway. So we will continue to provide that update, but specifically with reference to what Mr. Pacheco has asked, we will make sure that that capability in the Palm Pilot process and in selecting a contractor, that that is part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I ask staff some questions of the CLA? One of, one of the first things I'd be interested in knowing is what are the most significant provisions that the LAPD has not yet begun to implement of the consent decree?
We're in the process of actually ascertaining that right now. We'll be releasing a report probably by the end of this week or early next week on that. We're going, uh, in some instances, we believe that the, and we have to guard against this, but that in attempt to resolve an issue in the consent decree, we've added some other things that sometimes has held the thing up longer and we're trying to make sure that we separate and move forward on everything. But we'll have a report on the July 1st dates, like I say, in about a week. One of the problems is, too, is that when we negotiated the consent decree, it was the intent, or at least the expectation was that we would be entering in the consent decree sometime in last calendar year. decree sometime in last calendar year. And so July due dates meant something different than they did when you enter into the consent decree in June. Now, we were working on those and, but getting them out the door, et cetera. So there were a series of July due dates that we, we think we haven't entirely complied with, but we're, we'll be reporting shortly.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, the community outreach that is being done is something that I'm particularly concerned with. I want to know if that's just being done through the CPABs or whether there's extra efforts being made to work through other mechanisms at all?
Actually, the committee has asked for some information specific on that issue. We're not, we think that needs to be enhanced, and we're going to come back on a specific report on that. We're not totally satisfied with the way we're doing that.
Okay. And the last question is, in terms of the cost, are we winding up spending more on the administrative end than we initially anticipated? Are we on target, under target?
I think right now, we're basically on target, but some of the, on the consent decree, I believe that the Teams 2 thing eventually will be more than we anticipated.
Okay.
Just as it seems to be ballooning.
The very last thing, as we get some of the bids for the component dealing with mentally disabled folks, if those could be forwarded to my office, I'd love to take a look.
I think we'll, actually, when we, we'll be reporting shortly, along with Police Department, on where we are on all these items, and we'll have, I think that time would be a full, a good time for a full discussion on, on how we're, where we are and how we anticipate meeting the deadlines a little better, maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Ms. Misakowski.
Just to answer some of Mr. Garcetti's questions, the ad hoc committee on the consent decree is actually meeting on Monday. And on Monday, we have the issue of the noncompliance matrix of those issues that were supposed to have been set up and where we are and how soon we will hit that date. And we also have on the committee agenda, a pilot program on the mental training issues. So for any council member who's interested in that, that report, after we have the meeting on Monday, will come forward. But anyone who wants to participate in the committee Monday is when we will have all those discussions.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak on item 16? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Next item?
Item number 18, also called special.
Item 18 was called special by Councilmember Han. Ms. Han, we have one speaker card on this item. Public hearing has already been held. Did you wish to move a public hearing here? Okay, let's reopen the public hearing and hear from Kavita Paul. Please come forward.
My name is Kavita Paul, and on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council and the Coalition for Clean Air, we urge you to reject the proposed side letter and require a side letter with meaningful mitigation commitments be drafted and resubmitted to the council. Voluntary measures are not going to protect the public from toxic emissions. Such language as encourage, participate, consider is simply not strong enough. These communities already have one of the highest cancer risk in the South Coast basin from breathing the polluted air. They need real mitigation measures with, that are enforceable and mandatory. For example, measure six requires the parties will evaluate the feasibility of fuel cell-generated electricity. We believe that at the least, they should say, a requirement of an incremental phasen of fuel cells reaching 100% by 2010. This is simply an example of enforceable measures that should be included in the side letter. Council needs to understand the magnitude of this project. We're talking about a development of 110 acres, two new wharves, equalling hundreds of new large vessels with more emissions, thousands of diesel truck trips and thousands of diesel tugboat trips. This is a huge increase in diesel emissions posing a significant risk to the already at-risk surrounding community. We ask that the port assemble a task force to come up with the strongest feasible cost-effective measures. The port is expanding at an incredible rate. The China Shipping Facility is not an end to this growth, and we need an ongoing task force to deal with this tremendous amount of growth and pollution that the port will create. The NRDC and Coalition has drafted comments in response to the side letter that I believe was faxed to the council, and if it has not been received, I do have copies. Please consider them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public hearing on this item. The Chair recognizes Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Today, we have before us the side letter, which before I was on this council, the previous council voted to agree with the Port of Los Angeles to enter into the contract with China Shipping Company. At that time, during the council meeting, the communities of Wilmington and San Pedro came to testify at their concern and their fear that entering into this type of agreement would diminish already their quality of life, which they feel has been impacted many times by just living next to the Port of Los Angeles. It was asked that a side letter come back to this council in 60 days, 30, 60 days, by which China Shipping Company agreed to do some things which would help mitigate the negative impacts. If you have a chance to read the side letter, I would urge you to do it. It's probably one of the most far-reaching side letters, far-reaching agreements of this type of a lease to actually talk about, and not just talk about the feasibility of doing things. China Shipping Company, the Port of Los Angeles, Marine Terminals, who will operate this terminal, have actually agreed to do many things which will help to mitigate the impacts of particularly diesel emission on the communities. I would ask that you would support this side letter. One of the things I did to make this a little more enforceable, because it is voluntary, it is something that China Shipping Company and the port came back to, to help mitigate these impacts. I have asked for an independent agency, and I've asked for our own environmental affairs department in the city of Los Angeles to be the outside monitoring agency that will look at this side letter, and in 90 days after the terminal opens, will come back to us and report whether or not these items that they've agreed to do, they are actually doing. So I ask that you, you support this today. It has really lifted the bar, frankly, in terms of the future of the Port of Los Angeles. I think other ports around the world are actually going to be looking at what we were able to enter into an agreement with a huge shipping company to begin looking at the impacts that this type of working harbor will have on the surrounding communities. So I ask that you support this. And while I know the Natural Resource Defense Council and many in my community do not believe that this goes far enough, and while I am certainly in agreement of convening this independent task force, because I think the issues are larger than China Shipping Company. I think the issues surrounding the entire Port of Los Angeles have really gone unchecked for many years with the communities of Wilmington and San Pedro. So I will move forward in the coming weeks and months to work with the Port of Los Angeles to indeed create this independent task force of experts who will begin to study the impacts of pollution on the surrounding communities and come back with a pollution mitigation plan as we move forward. I believe, finally, we will strike a balance. We will strike a balance with the Port of Los Angeles between them being the economic engine of Southern California and how that impacts the quality of life for my residents in San Pedro and Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick question, and I praise Councilmember Han for adding the component. Is there going to be, for the task force that would come back, what sort of enforcement mechanism might they have, if any? Or is this a task force that at least can come back time and time again to make sure this is ongoing?
My sense is that we will ask the Port of Los Angeles at a later date to convene this task force with independent experts to study the pollution impacts, and then to come back with a plan on how we mitigate that. Now, again, it becomes to the enforcement issue. But I think we, you know, there's a lot of agencies that we have, whether it's the AQMD or even our own, again, the city's environmental affairs department is created to monitor and help enforce environmental issues with other city departments. So, I believe, but I think you're right, enforcement and accountability is the key in that. But I think just convening that task force will be a huge step for my communities.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to speak?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Holden?
If the environmental affairs department discovers during its investigation that some of the, that there's a violation of the lease agreement, then what is the penalty for that, if anything? If it's discovered by the environmental affairs department that there's a violation in your lease agreement, what is the penalty? Go on and keep doing what you're doing? Fine assessed? City attorney.
The Harbor Department is here, and they are the ones who would answer that because it is their contract.
Staff, please come forward.
Hold my time, Mr. President. And grant some of it to Mrs. Han.
Yes, sir. I did. Just kindly give us an answer. I'm Larry Keller, Executive Director of the Harbor Department. Counselman, in concluding the agreement with China Shipping, we essentially concluded a lease which was much like any other, within any other shipping company. When the council, however, asked us what else we could do in terms of some offsetting mitigations, and we suggested the side letter, which is up for approval today, we went forward on a voluntary basis with these organizations. We believe that both China Shipping, we and the terminal operator are absolutely committed to getting these things done, not only on an as-available basis, but on an aggressive basis as well. It's not, it's not punitive, it's not, it's not law, but again, what we negotiated are things that the EPA can't get, the International IMO can't get, the AQMD can't get, but the city of Los Angeles is getting cooperatively with an organization that believes it's doing the right thing. This is, this is historic, Counselman, honestly and truly.
You know what, sir? You didn't say nothing. Talked about, maybe you're just agreeing to do something to make things better. EPA, you say couldn't do that, AQMD can't do, can't do that, but you and the city can. You're saying that people who hold these leases, that's what they want to do, and that's what they're going to do. Then why do we have the problem if that's what they're going to do?
We're not entirely certain that we do have a problem, but as long as the council believes that we did, we think that this is...
Oh, you don't, you don't think you have a problem?
Well, that's not, that's not exactly correct, Counselman, that's not...
All right. Well, as long as you satisfy Ms. Han, I guess you represent the area, but I got to tell you, the answer is not very good.
It's an, it's an imperfect world, and sometimes you do cooperatively what you can't do legislatively, and we believe that we have that level of cooperation.
Imperfect means things are out of balance before every action, there's equal opposite reaction, so things are stabilized. Nothing changed.
No.
All right, no more comment.
Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
The item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 20, called special by Councilmember Brinson.
Any other members with questions on item number 20? Clerk, please open the roll on item number 20. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 20 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 21, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Item 21 is now before us. Chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
President members, I think we should have a report on this, given the fact that we voted yesterday, set aside $100 million for the purpose of providing affordable housing. First-time home buying definition has changed, and so is the soft loan program change, which should sufficiently increase the contribution of the city from $23 per person to something more than what the other cities are setting aside for such programs for affordable housing. So therefore, Mr. President and members, I respectfully request that we have somebody from the department tell us about this program and speak to the issue of the city's contribution to provide affordable housing, and should this be considered a part of it?
Mr. Penny.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is to standardize our Soft Second Program. Soft Second Program is a deferred second interest loan in property for homeownership. Standardize those at $60,000. Right now, it's 20, 40, and 60. This is based on the income of the homebuyer. We'd also change the provisions for the Home Works Program, where there is a property that needs to be rehabbed that the homeowner is buying. We would standardize those loans at $75,000. Again, it's a deferred second interest loan, travels with the deed until the property is sold. This is much more user-friendly and much easier to use for the homebuyer.
Mr. Holden?
I didn't answer your question about, you, where do you get that $23 per person to provide affordable housing for the city? Where do you get that? Did you share that with Mr. Pacheco?
That figure was based on a national study that was done, that was discussed yesterday. In terms of the trust fund, the council and the mayor had determined to provide trust fund money for homeownership.
Mr. Penny, my question to you in my time as running, whether or not this program will contribute significantly to the city's contribution toward providing affordable housing for people who need...
Sounds like a yes or no question.
The, this provides homebuyer money. The trust fund...
You and I talked afterwards, I thought you had an understanding of this, but obviously you don't. You did the question. And then, of course, this zero interest, up to 60 to 75,000 bucks, is that right?
That's correct.
Zero interest, is that help affordable housing? Single-family homes, including in this, first-time homebuyers?
That's correct.
That's right. Who's eating that?
This is funded by home funds. It is for the homebuyer, it's deferred.
And you made, and for 30 years, they can live there and not pay any principal?
That's correct. It's based on their...
And no interest? So you're losing money from the standpoint, it's like putting $10,000 in the bank, collecting no interest, let it sit there for 30 years. You know what that's going to be worth in 30 years?
The people wouldn't be able to afford to buy the home.
I understand all of that. What I'm saying is that we are doing something, no matter, to provide affordable housing, no matter what is being said publicly from time to time.
That's correct.
We're doing a lot, and you should get credit for it. Pat yourself on the chest, boom, boom, boom. I'm saying, I'm serious.
We have $10 million a year for this program.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, it's always interesting to have one of my committee colleagues rise at the floor, but what Mr. Holden doesn't recognize in this debate and this discussion is that these funds are federal funds, the home program is HUD money that comes directly from the federal government. And what we're trying to do with the Housing Trust Fund is generate local funds to complement these types of programs. It's not meant for us to take double credit for funds that are coming from the federal level. So, the, this program is a good program, it provides homeowners an opportunity, but the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is to generate local funds to complement these federal funds.
Correct. Thank you. Seeing no other members wishing to speak, Mr. Zine, quick, get the draw.
How many people are waiting on this program? And we've heard about other programs where there's long waiting lists. Do you have waiting lists?
No, we haven't had a waitlist because of the income limits. It's 80% of medium income for a family of five, that would be $47,100 a year. We can finance a home of about $180,000. That limits the areas that, in the city where homes could be financed. We're spending about $7 to $8 million. We've also created an asset control area with HUD and entered into an agreement with Enterprise where we're going to take foreclosed housings and do the same type of thing on a Soft Second Program on a higher volume than we've done in the past.
Well, the people that want this, the people of Los Angeles, can you give me a number? How many are waiting? Or how many have been given loans?
On the previous program, which was 35,000 in the Home Works Program and the Soft Seconds, we have done approximately 100 a year. This program, we have not started marketing yet. It hasn't been announced because it hasn't been approved yet. So we anticipate would be, we would have much greater demand than we had the previous program. Because of the housing prices, this would make the... Because of the housing prices, this would make the homebuyers able, they enable them to buy the houses. So once it is marketed, once it's announced, we're sure we are getting a lot of response from the public.
And I know they have programs for police officers and firefighters. Does this connect at all with those programs, or are they separate?
No, this is a separate program for lower-income people. Most of the police officers and firefighters would not qualify this because of their income.
Well, maybe sometimes they could, though. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Reyes.
Council President, Members of the council, this is important because it allows us to start stabilizing our communities that are in transition. If we can continue to sponsor, to support, pride in homeownership, it does stabilize a lot of our communities...
That's correct.
...that tend to be in transition. So I applaud the department and all our efforts to continue this multi-prong approach in dealing with the notion of pride in homeownership, pride in place, and continue the stabilities for, provide every tool we can to stabilize our communities. So I thank you for that.
Ms. Perry.
Mr. Penny, I'm looking at subsection G of this item, and I just wanted to raise a question about the $20,000 for homebuyer educational outreach. That's not a lot of money. Have you made any decisions about which council districts you will be conducting outreach and how you're going to spend that money? Will it be spent citywide, or are you going to target it?
It's a citywide expenditure through homeownership partnership with Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and the county and other jurisdictions in the area. Ours is targeted strictly to the city.
Have all council districts expressed an interest in having educational outreach in their council districts?
The council districts that are eligible for the program have done that. Again, the income is limited at 80% of medium income, and we have done outreach in all of those council districts.
Now, I'm assuming that the ninth council district would be eligible.
It is one of our major home-buying areas.
So would you be spending more in one council district and less in another, or how does that work?
It would be basically spread in the city and the eligible council districts. Again, some of the council districts don't have houses that are eligible for this. We concentrate in those areas that are eligible under the income limits.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 21 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 28, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Item number 28. Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. President, I would just ask if we could do one small thing with this item, which is to pull out 3030B from the package for further review by planning staff so we can have a little bit more input on that one particular item. Thank you.
So request to adopt item 30, with the exception of 30B?
3030B.
3030B. And have that...
I'm not sure if that's part of the ordinance or not, and if that is part of the ordinance...
That changes the substance of the ordinance. Ms. Sikowski.
We may want to lay this on the desk. If it's part of an overall ordinance, we have to have a new ordinance minus that piece, substituting it. Or you could just hold the whole ordinance, if you'd like, while you check 30B to see if that's okay to go forward. But you need, one way or another, we need to draft a new ordinance minus that if you don't want it. So we could continue it for a week or two.
Why don't we put it on the table, and the probably easiest thing then is just to do a substitute motion?
Let's leave that on the desk for now.
I might say, I think we're just about ready to go into closed session. That being the case, planning staff will be gone, and maybe planning staff wants to speak on the urgency or the ability to continue this ordinance.
Terry Speth from Community Planning Staff. The owner of the subject property has requested that we go back and review the record on this particular piece. Since the hearing was held over two years ago, I indicated that I would listen to the tape to make sure that it is correct. Staff would prefer that the ordinance go through minus that one sub-area, and just simply deleting that one sub-area.
Mr. Garcetti.
As I understand things, we actually can't do that procedurally. So if you want, we can withhold it for one week, but that is for the entire ordinance, so that you can look at that. So do you want to withhold?
That would be accepted.
Okay. I'd like to withhold, then.
Thank you very much.
Ordinance before us. Mr. Garcetti withholds, carries over for one week for a second reading. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred?
Before going into closed session, there's a request to be excused from Councilmember Pacheco for Friday, August 17th, personal business meets council policy.
Mr. Pacheco is excused.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you. Any other housekeeping? That's it?
No.
We've completed public comment. In conformance with California Code, the council recessed into closed session. Members of the public are asked to vacate chambers. Sergeants, please clear chambers. Welcome back into public session. Clerk, what is the next item?
Item number 37E settlement in the case of Horton versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of $100,000.
Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item 37F is a settlement in the amount of $150,000 in the case of Ronald Wilkie versus the City of Los Angeles.
Clerk, please open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved.
Next item, 37G settlement in the case of Delbert Carrillo versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of $245,000.
Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Forthwith on all three of those.
Perhaps not on the Wilkie case.
Except for that, the Wilkie case. Next item, please.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
There's been a request by Councilmember Pacheco to reopen the public comment period for three minutes. I have no speaker cards. Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to call anybody specifically forward?
She's got her speaker card, or she'd like to step forward. Mr. President, thank you, and councilmembers, thank you for the courtesy. Since we did public hearing in the early part of the meeting, this group arrived late and missed that opportunity, so we're going to give you the opportunity to speak.
How much time did you wish?
I would say three minutes would be fine. I think she wants to read into the record a letter.
Ms. Ernestina Montellano.
Yes, uh-huh. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ernestina Montellano. I am the chairperson of a committee against the Adelante Eastside Plan that was brought into our community, Boyle Heights by the Councilman Richard Alatorre, and the Community Redevelopment Agency. It was adopted on March 24th, 1999, at the council chambers. The only people that were appraising this plan were the people of the Resurrection Church and their priests, while the rest of the people had little or no knowledge of this plan. There was other people also there that didn't live in our area. We are here with a petition of 1,076 signatures of the people that demand to take off eminent domain from this plan that will affect 2,200 acres and at least thousands of families, business owners, homeowners, and renters. The ones that will benefit are the big contractors and the CRA and certain political groups. I want the petition to be put on record. We must regain the freedom to speak and the freedom of choice. The CRA has eminent domain in our commercial areas, but the plan could be changed in less than one year, and the residential areas can be put back immediately. We, the people of my committee, have called, wrote letters, also met with Pacheco before. And before we could speak, he let us know that he was for the plan, just the way it was. He is there for his needs and for the needs of his friends, not our needs, and has led others' plans into Boyle Heights. He, to me, is our worst nightmare. Thank you.
Here is the letter.
Thank you very much.
And here is the signatures.
Thank you very much. We'll receive both the letter and the signatures, and this once again concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Clerk, next item.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
Are there any adjournment requests? Members, any tributes? Ms. Hahn.
Colleagues, I ask us to adjourn today in the memory of James Cleaver, who passed away this morning at 7:00 a.m. Jim was a longtime friend of the Hahn family, was a member of my father's staff along with Councilman Holden for many years, and was one of the true community people that my father had on his staff, who always looked out for the community's interests and needs, and was a fine public servant in his own right for many years. And I know Nate joins me and would like to say some things.
Mr. Holden?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Members. It's a sad day for, another sad day for the Hahn family. The Hahn family includes all the staff people who served Supervisor Hahn in the Second District, and we were like a family. And Jim Cleaver was one such person who gave every day to the community and to the staff. He was a reporter for the Los Angeles Sentinel newspaper, and then, of course, Supervisor Hahn would see him from time to time out in the community, and says, "Jim, come work for us. Come work for me," as one of his deputies. And so he did. Jim served us well. He was dedicated to his job and to the community. Certainly, he won't be replaced, and he'll always be remembered for his public service for the Second District and the County of Los Angeles. He will be missed. He was a personal friend of mine as well. And as I speak and adjourn emotions, I'd like to adjourn in memory of another dear friend, Bill Howell, who had a massive stroke night before last and died yesterday. He was an architect and responsible for designing many of the buildings. In fact, he worked on City Hall. Many of the buildings in the city and the County of Los Angeles, schools, et cetera. Did something for Supervisor Hahn in the Second District as well. These guys are, made their mark, established their historical perspective, and now they've gone home to be with the creator, the maker of the universe, and will never be forgotten. I guess things like that are inevitable, but they will always be remembered for the good work they have done, and certainly we're adjourning his memory as well, Bill Howell.
Thank you. Ms. Sikowski.
President, I'd like to have the council adjourn in the memory of Randy Hayes. Randy was a former Palisadesian who died suffering a massive heart attack. He was only 47. He had been raised in the Palisades, serving as president of the Paul Revere, then junior high school graduating class in 1972, went on and became senior class president of Palisades High School in '75, was passionate about kids, sports, training, and working with them, went on and got his degree at San Diego State, became a teacher, and moved up to San Francisco, where he actually served as principal of a similarly named school, Paul Revere Elementary School, in an economically depressed area called Burnell Heights there in San Francisco. He is survived by his two sons, 14- and 10-year-old Sam and Max, his wife, his father, and many, many other relatives from the Palisades. He's going to be much missed in terms of the service he provided to kids. I would also like the council to adjourn in the memory of Catherine Graham. She was just an incredible woman, at an important place and point in our history in terms of the constitutional issues that were challenged over the Battle of the Pentagon Papers and the publication of the Washington Post, and the work that that paper did, and we've read many, many books and seen movies about, but it was Catherine Graham who stood at the helm of that paper and committed, as a woman who had not been trained to become who she was in middle age, took on that responsibility, became a staunch supporter and advocate for the freedom of the press, the freedom of speech, and made important decisions with very, very powerful and potent forces allied against her. And I think she is just going to go down in history, at least in this last century, as just one of the most important people standing for those principles, those constitutional principles that we all depend on.
Any others? Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.